Terry, is Terry ready? Ready? Okay, guys, you ready? I'd like to call the Planning Commission meeting to order.
We need to wait until we're on air.
Okay. We're not on air yet. Now we're on air. So I'd like to call the Planning Commission meeting to order. And I would like to welcome everyone that's in the audience. If you have a cellphone, I would just ask that you would silence your cellphone for us. And I'll do the same to mine as we sit in here and speak. Second here. Can we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Donenfeld.
Present.
Commissioner Garner. Commissioner Hirschbein.
Present.
Commissioner Hudson.
Present.
Commissioner Song is excused. Vice Chair Maruzzi.
Here.
And Chair Woods.
Present.
Six members present, we have a quorum.
Thank you. Can we have a staff report on the posting of the agenda?
Mr. Chair, the agenda was posted on Thursday, March 21st. This meeting has been noticed and posted in accordance with state law.
Thank you very much. Do the commissioners have any revisions to the agenda? If not, can I have a motion to approve the agenda in a second?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Okay, is... Is anyone opposed to the agenda as it is? Hearing nothing, I'll say the agenda is approved. This is a time set aside for members of the public to address the Planning Commission on the consent calendar, non-public hearing items, and items of general interest within the subject and matter to the jurisdiction of the commission. If you wish to speak on the items, please come forward at this time for non-public hearings. If you're here for living out, you will speak during the living out public hearing, not at this point in time. Comments on a public hearing may be made at the time the item is presented, which is forthcoming. Please note the Planning Commission is prohibited from taking action on items not listed on the posted agenda. Three minutes will be allowed per speaker. Is there anyone who wants to address the commission at this point on a non-public hearing item? Seeing no one, I'll move on. Thank you very much. The first item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes of March 13, 2009.
I have a correction.
Okay.
On page three of six, under the item near the bottom of the page, which talks about mitigation measures after the Sierra Club discussion, it says mitigation measures may be implemented and monitored. I believe it should be shall. Same is true of number two, comments on the environmental review provided by wildlife agencies shall be incorporated, as opposed to may.
On the first one, yes, we can make that change. In terms of the second one, that one needs to remain optional if wildlife agencies propose conditions that may not be appropriate or relevant. The city needs to have the ability to be able to decide which ones are appropriate based on the specific conditions of the project. So I would just caution you in terms of making that correction.
So the agencies will provide some sort of response, and then it's up to staff to review?
Staff and the Planning Commission.
Okay, then I'm okay with that.
Any more comments on the minutes? Okay, hearing none, I need to abstain. I was not at this meeting for the minutes, but do I hear a motion to approve the minutes of March 13th?
So moved.
Second? Seconded? All in favor, just say aye.
Aye.
Okay, it passes. We now move into public hearing, and I need to, at this point, recuse myself. I have worked for the developer on this project, so I need to recuse myself from this. And I'll be turning over the meeting to my vice chair, Peter Maruzzi. Thank you very much.
Alrighty. I think it's pronounced CORE, Palm Springs for Preliminary Plan Development District Application, Tentative Track Map, and Major Architectural Application, and Adoption of an Addendum to a Previously Approved Mitigated Negative Declaration for the Construction of a 95-unit, three-story condominium building and a 4,990-square-foot retail structure located at 1122 East Takwitz Canyon Way. May we have a staff report, please?
Thank you, Vice Chair. What I'd like to do is start off with an explanation of what is before the Planning Commission today. So the Planning Commission will review a Preliminary Plan Development District. And what this means is that it will allow residential development as part of the project and allow pet services to be on-site. It will approve the preliminary development plans, including a site plan, building plans, building elevations, color and materials, landscaping, parking, usable open space, and will also review a tentative track map, tentative track map 37602, which will subdivide one lot into, I'm sorry, will combine two lots, but then subdividing into four lots. And I'll go over those lots further on into the proposal. And it's also to approve an addendum to a previously approved mitigative negative declaration to be consistent with the SEQA findings. So to orient everyone as to where the site is, this is an area photograph of the corner of Hermosa Drive and East Takwitz Canyon Way. So looking at the slides in the middle, the blue boxed area is the vacant lots, which currently are at the site. You'll see that there is an Extended Stay America, which is to the right of the project or east. The convention center is to the left or to the west. And then there is some office buildings below and to the south. So what I'll do is I'll go over some of the design concepts that are proposed. The development standards for the site are based upon the REO zone, which is Resort Entertainment Office, which is in the Section 14 Master Plan, which is a tribal-specific plan. That equates to a tourist resort commercial general plan and also equates to an R4 zoning of the Palm Springs zoning code, which is high-density residential. Those were the standards that were used to evaluate the project based upon the R4 zone standards. The proposal that's before you today is not asking for any deviations of those standards. So it meets all the required setbacks. It meets the heights. It meets open space. It meets the number of parking spaces required. What the planned development is asking for is a deviation to allow pet services, which is not a permitted use in the REO zone. And I'll show you in a minute where the pet services are going to go. So before you, on this slide, is an illustrative plan of the design of the proposed three-story, sort of Y-shaped, building with all the associated amenities. There are two access points onto the site. Let me go to the site plan, which may be a little bit more helpful. One main access is off of Hermosa Drive and another access off of East Takwitz Canyon Way. When the project went before the Architect's Revise Committee, they reviewed this twice. The first time, the AAC had some concerns about the site entrances and how the site layout was. They worked with the architectural team to come back with a plan. And then the second review that was before AAC was back in February, and there were some additional revisions that they needed, they wanted to be made to this plan. And what is before you today reflects those revisions based upon what the AAC recommended. Sorry, our slide system's working a little slow. So before you here, on this slide, is a landscape plan. And as you can see, there are pools that are, multiple pools that are throughout the site. There's a front-entry motor court that comes in off of Hermosa Drive. There's a bocce court and other sort of amenities that are sprinkled throughout the north edge of the site and the west edge of the site. So we're going to go into some height limits and the development standards. There we go. So this slide shows some of the landscape character that's proposed, some of the light furniture, the furnishings, the lighting, decorative gravel, sidewalks, and paving, and just some concepts of what the landscape will look like. And keep in mind that this is a preliminary PD review, and a final PD will come back before the Architect's Revise Committee and the Planning Commission. So you'll see that some of the plants are general, meaning there's a list of types of large trees, acacias, and palaverdes. The final plan will nail those specific trees down, which the Planning Commission will have another review. So you're looking broadly at concepts today. So there's a series in your packet of drawings of what the development will look like. So as you mentioned, at the bottom is the East Takwitz Canyon Way, showing how the building is oriented. It does come right up to the street. However, it is set back 20 feet from the property line along Takwitz and along Hermosa. So it does meet the setback requirements. You'll notice that there's a green space in the middle of the slide. This is a proposed dog park, which will be used by the residents and also by the pet services, which is in the 4,990-square-foot retail space that anchors the corner. Once again, there is several slides that show the massing of the building. So as I mentioned, it's three stories. And in this slide, parking for the residential portion of the building will be underneath two wings of the building. So in the middle of the slide, you'll see a car that is about to drive into the parking garage that will house the vehicles, the residents of the complex. This is a diagram or drawing of the motor court as you come in. You'll see that there is a portico shore that provides drop-off and pickup and a middle landscape element. And the architectural team will describe what this will be when they make their presentation. Once again, this is a drawing of the corner that will be up adjacent to East Takwitz Canyon Way. You'll notice that in the design, there are large overhangs. The materials include white stucco and ashler stone. So the left-hand side is the elevator shaft that will be cladded in stone, and there'll be decorative metal panels of Corten steel. The balcony railings are tempered glass that is galvanized, or glazed. Once again, this is a better diagram or a show of the decorative panels that are on the third floor of the building. So in your packet, there are building elevations that show height limits of the building. So the maximum height of the building is 32.4 feet to the top of the roof, 35 feet five inches to the top of the roof screen, and then the elevator, top of the elevator shafts are 41 feet. This is within the limits that are allowed within the REO zone. 35 feet is the maximum height. However, mechanical equipment and other uses can project higher. As I mentioned, the materials that are proposed are metal trim for the windows, the perforated Corten steel screens, bronze glazing, ashler stone, and then stucco on the exterior of the building. There's a series of diagrams showing the amenities package that will be throughout the building. The AAC, one of their recommendations was that the first-floor patio areas be increased. And you can see in this slide, that's what they're showing currently. And then the pool areas throughout the development. Another slide showing what the amenities package will look like. And these are several other slides showing what is proposed. So the interior of the building includes a restaurant, a fitness center, theaters. The units, the 95 units consist of one and two bedrooms, and the parking calculation is based upon those calculations themselves. So you'll see in this slide that shows the parking on the first floor, and then the second floor is all residential units, the third floor is residential units, and then a roof plan. And you'll see that they're proposing solar rays on the roofs themselves. Also, we have a design of the units. So in this slide, in the original plan that was presented to the AAC, there was a two-driveway boulevard that went into the motor court area. Over the development phase, they've narrowed it down to a 24-two-way driveway that comes into the motor court. And there's another driveway that enters into the retail portion so that there's a separation between the residential and the retail. And also, there's a vehicular connection between the motor court and the retail parking lot. So if you are a resident and you're coming down Takwitz towards the west, you can turn into the driveway that's to the bottom of the slide. And if you're coming east towards the airport and you have to make a left-hand turn on Hermosa, you'll come into either the retail portion parking lot, or you'll go into the main driveway into the residential, and then you can connect into the parking garage underneath the west wing. Moving on to... Moving on to the retail section, this is a diagram, a floor plan of the retail space, which, as you mentioned, is pet grooming services. So it'll be a combination of a pet hotel, grooming, and retail. The building is 4,990 square feet and will anchor the corner. They're proposing a public plaza, as you can see in this diagram, which will be an amenity. And I'll get to the idea of a public benefit, which is required under the Planned Development District. So in this picture, you'll see that the design of the retail building is similar to the residential. The AAC wanted to have very similar elements as far as the Corten steel, the fins, the large overhangs, the bronze glass, and the storefront system. They were also concerned about pedestrian connections and how the area circulates and how pedestrians would connect to the retail and residents of the complex, how they would connect to the street. And this is showing circulation throughout the site and multiple connections to Takwitz and Hermosa. As I mentioned earlier, this is a vehicle circulation plan showing how you'd get into the site, and if you were parking in the west wing, how you would get to it and park in the garage there. A lighting plan showing lighting throughout the site, and then a shade tree, shading of the parking lot requirement, which they do meet. So one of the project requirements is that a track map be recorded. And this is the tentative track map showing the larger portion, which is the residential, and then three other lots, two consisting of the retail portion and then the dog park area, and then another lot that's to the northeast corner of the lot. And this is for future development, and the designer can, the architectural team can tell you what they're proposing there. In your packet, there's also a street plan showing the widening of Hermosa Drive. Currently, the street is half widened on the other hotel side, so they'll be required to widen the street out, add curb and gutter and sidewalk. They're also required to do, and one of the engineering conditions is to add a bus turnout, and the applicant has a request on that condition of approval. So these are some photographs of the site. You'll see that it's currently flat and has scrub vegetation on it. This is looking down Takwitz Canyon Way, and where that blue can is, is the proposed bus stop, or I'm sorry, is the bus stop, and a pullout is proposed. And this is looking up Hermosa. And as I mentioned, the street will be widened to the required width. Let me go back to the site plan. Actually, let's start with the public benefit. So as part of the PDD requirement, they're required to provide a public benefit that's proportionate to their request. They're requesting to allow pet services as a use in the REO zone, which is not a lot of impact compared to asking for deviations from the zoning code. So they are not asking for any deviations. So they're proposing, and there's a letter in your packet describing the public benefit, that providing this corner park is the public benefits itself. Staff believes that some sort of art piece may be appropriate in this site or maybe somewhere else throughout the development. And in the planning conditions of approval, you'll see that that is one of our suggestions. So in your packet, there is a, a series of required findings that you need to make to approve the PDD. Also, there's architectural review findings for the design. In terms of the CEQA clearance, when the original project was done in 2008, it was for a larger scale project with, which consisted of a hotel and two retail components. That was in 2008. In 2012, another development called Vivante was proposed. And that also relied on the original approval of the mitigated negative declaration. And that project was less than what was originally proposed. In this proposal, once again, it is less than what the Vivante was requesting, which was a assisted living 135 unit complex. This is a smaller, it's 95 units. So we have prepared an addendum to the original mitigative negative declaration, which is in your packet for your review. So that is the CEQA determination that we, we feel the planning commission can make and ultimately will be adopted by the city council. The consultant for that report is here and he will make a presentation to you shortly. So within your packet is a resolution with a recommendation of approval to the city council for all the elements as described previously. I would like to mention that before you today, there are some amended conditions of approval. And there's two conditions that are relative to engineering conditions. Engineering condition number six is to construct a 24-foot wide driveway. The original was wider than that. It's not necessary for them to have wider than 24 feet. And then condition number 13 is also to construct only two 24-foot wide driveways. The original conditions had three. So the approval of the PDD requires a public hearing. Notice was sent out to all adjacent abutting property owners within, and residents within 500 feet. The, the property was posted way back in the fall, noticing, notifying the neighbors of the proposed development. So Chair, Vice Chair, that concludes my report. The consultant is here from MSA, if you'd like them to speak now or ask questions first.
Why don't we have some questions for staff first? Mr. Donofield?
I have a few questions for staff. With respect to using a 2008 CEQA report, I do see where you list the factors which, under California law, permit you to use a previously approved CEQA report for a particular site. But the one thing it doesn't address, and it concerned me, was this is an 11-year-old CEQA document. So what about the timeliness of this? I understand that the prior proposals were for larger developments, but nine years is a long time to relying on, on, on an original environmental document.
When, if you, and maybe the environmental consultant can redress this. When we did the addendum, they looked at the same elements that are required as far as cultural, biological noise. However, we did have them update a traffic study and other elements that would be relevant, more relevant to this project. So we, we are confident that it addresses the 2008 project.
And you believe that under California law, we will satisfy the CEQA requirements by simply amending the mitigated negative declaration, by updating it with respect to new features to the site and relying on the old document from 2008?
Yes.
With respect to the parking counts, you mentioned there's a restaurant in, in the facility. Is that restaurant going to be open to the public or just open to the residents of the complex?
My understanding, it's just the residents, but they may--
Because you don't show any count for any possible public use.
Right, there's, there's guest spaces for the residential portion and for the retail portion. So guest spaces that are required are included in there, but it's not calculated as a restaurant.
As a restaurant. With respect to the pet services facility, is that going to be a full-service veterinary hospital? Or what exactly is going to be happening there?
I don't, my understanding is that it's not a veterinary service.
Is it a boarding facility?
Yes.
And grooming?
Yes.
Has the tribe looked at this yet?
The, the, we've coordinated this review with the Agua Caliente Band of Cooia Indians. The sequence of events is the planning commission will make their decision. It will go to tribal planning commission and then to tribal council before it moves on to final review by city council.
So there's been no preliminary review yet by the tribe?
They have reviewed the plans. They've seen the plans, but we've not received comments from them.
The developer has met with officials of the tribe?
I can't say for sure, but I know they have been in contact with them.
My last question is with respect to parking. Am I correct that all resident parking is going to be on the first level of the two arms of the three-arm building?
That's my understanding.
Any provisions, and maybe this is a question for the applicant, for fumes and other things that are generated in parking facilities since you're going to be having people living above that parking lot?
Well, the, the proposal scheme is not uncommon in some residential developments or commercial developments. They, they'll have to explain their ventilation system. I'm, I'm not aware of--
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chair, I'll just jump in and say there are building code requirements that come into play relative to parking structures, that they're enclosed versus open and the airflow, et cetera. So it's something that will be reviewed by the building and safety department.
Will there be sides, then, will the, will the ungrade parking basically be qualified as a closed parking area? Will the, the sides will be all up and closed, it'll be enclosed?
We'll have the applicant speak to that in terms of the percentage of enclosure of the parking structure.
Thank you. No more questions for me.
Commissioner Hudson?
Yes, thank you. Glenn, I was around for the, the previous two projects, actually. But pertaining to the Vivante project, which was also a housing project, that, that did in fact have more units, but as I recall, the units were quite a bit smaller. Is there anywhere in your report, a square footage comparison between Vivante and this project?
There's not. However, the Vivante project was similar in design. It was three stories and I don't know if it was a Y shape or L-shaped building, but it was, it was similar. I think massing was, was a little bit taller, but it was similar.
Commissioner Hirschman?
Yeah, thank you. Thanks for the review. But I have a couple of questions. Specifically, I'd like to know what changes were instituted per the AAC comments? I know you've mentioned two. You've mentioned the double driveway kind of boulevard thing going down to a single driveway, double-laned. And you also mentioned larger private patios on the ground floor. But specifically, what were the other comments that were addressed? What changes were made and how were the comments accommodated?
In your packet, there are minutes from the meeting. So I wanted to make sure that you, you had those, you could read through that. Let's see, so--
What page are you on?
Well, in the staff report, it's towards the back. There are minutes from the December 3rd meeting and the February 4th meeting.
Give me one second.
I, I was actually present for at least one of those AAC meetings. So I heard quite a few of their comments.
Right, so some of the members were concerned about use of the Corten steel and if it would drip onto the white stucco. And they were asked to sort of devise a way to maybe seal the Corten so that doesn't occur. The circulation pattern--
And so, I'm sorry--
I'm sorry.
How was that addressed then? How was the issue of the stuck, the Corten stain going on to the, either the dry, the ground plane or the building plane? How was that addressed?
Right, so in this picture, they were concerned that the screen would drip if it was not treated in a way that would seal it.
The screen itself is treated?
That's what they're proposing, yes. So that it doesn't bleed or drip.
Okay.
There was issue with the, the landscape. They had a water feature in the middle of the motor court. That has been removed. They want to study that farther. And that would come back, obviously, to planning commission for final review. So they're sort of working on their concepts.
And why did AAC object to a water feature?
I think it was the design of the water feature.
Not, not having a water feature specifically, but the specific design of it?
The design, right.
Okay.
There were some questions about the, the fencing at the dog park, the original project. The Section 14 specific plan says that for every 25 feet of a wall that faces the street, it has to undulate or, or change a step back. And, I'm sorry, we're having, slide system's really slow today. So this is the, the, the middle feature where they had a water and, okay. So they've, they redesigned the dog park to have a, sort of a serpentine wall that, that had, that's, here it is. So that has slats that can be seen through. They were concerned about dogs charging the fence and, and frightening people along the sidewalk.
How tall is that fence or wall?
I think it's five feet. They were concerned about access to trash. Trash is located underneath the west wing, which is where this blue car is pulling in. So you'll see that there's a pullover area next to this white car in this slide where deliveries would, delivery trucks would pull over and unload and unload and unload. The trash is in, underneath the building itself. So they'll wheel out the dumpsters and the trash trucks will pick up the trash from there.
So the residents go to the dumpster in the, in the first floor parking garage to dump their trash?
There's probably an internal trash chute somewhere.
Oh, chute, okay, got it.
The stone material on the exterior of the building, some of the AAC members wanted to take a closer look at that material. It's an Ashler stone. They want to make sure that it's, that it's a real stone and not a fake stone.
Have they done that?
One of their recommendations was that it come back to AAC when it comes to final approval.
So they haven't seen it yet?
They haven't seen it yet, no. One thing that we did look at is a circulation pattern that, that staff worked out with, with the applicant. As I mentioned, they originally had two street roads that went into the, the circular driveway. And now it's been condensed into one. The AAC felt that it would reduce pavement and make it more, more green. So those are sort of a summary of, of where AAC was discussing.
Well, thank you for that. And I find that really helpful. I mean, we, we have this subcommittee of the commission that looks at our, the architectural components of these projects. And often we don't get that kind of in-depth analysis of what changes they want. And it really helps us, me anyway, make a decision moving forward on the architectural components of the project. So thank you, and I encourage you to do that more in the future. So thanks. I've got a couple of other questions. If there were no, if there was not a pet component to this, this little building and so forth, would this not be a PDD?
Let me jump in on that one. The general plan designation for the site is tourist resort commercial. And the language, the existing language in the general plan states that permanent residential uses must come through as a planned development district. And so two of the reasons why this is a planned development district, number one is because the general plan requires it. Secondly, is for the overnight pet use. As you're aware, we will be working on the general plan very soon. And that's one of the things that we're looking to modify is requirements for planned development districts. In this case, they're not requesting any waivers of development standard. So it really wouldn't be necessary.
So yeah, and I was just saying, and, and is the, is our new, is the PDD ordinance, is that still proposed or is it in effect?
City council has approved it and it's coming into effect.
So that means that regardless of the general plan requirement or the, or, or, they would have needed a PD, excuse me, let me just back up a second. What I meant to say was, under the new ordinance, it has to be mixed use. Is that correct, to be a PDD?
Correct. It has to have a mixture of uses. And they do qualify for that by having the commercial component.
Yeah, that's what I was trying to, okay, so thanks for that. Commissioner Donofield asked one of my questions. So this is on Indian land. As far as signage, I know we're not reviewing signage today, but will they be required to develop a sign program for the building and will we see it?
We have not seen any signage proposed for the retail, I'm sorry, the residential component. However, if you remember, in one of the slides of the retail section, there's a long stone wall that they've discussed maybe using a signage. But we have not seen the signage. And it would not come back to the planning commission. They're two separate buildings, they're not a multi-tenant building. So we would evaluate it based upon the sign code.
Okay. And so I'm not asking you to hopefully stretch your memory too much, but what, just from my own information in the commission's, what would the sign code allow?
The, this frontage, linear frontage, one for one, that fronts the street, so, for the retail building. So if it's, has a 20-foot frontage, it would be allowed 20 square feet of signage.
Okay.
And it's a corner, so it may have more than one sign.
And then what about the residential building? If it wanted to identify, brand itself or identify itself, what would be the rules governing that?
They could ask for a low monument sign that would have the name of the development.
And that follows current city code for signage?
Right. I don't know off the top of my head what the signage requirements are, but it's less than 50 square feet.
But as far as that linear business, that wouldn't apply to the big residential building because it doesn't front the street? Would that be a correct statement?
No, we'd have to evaluate it. And when it's a hotel, it's based upon number of units. And there's all kinds of different calculations based upon that.
Okay, thank you very much for that.
Any other questions of staff? I have a few. Is this fee simple land?
It is fee simple land. The, the lot was purchased a while back.
So in terms of the ultimate jurisdiction the tribe has, is it my understanding that it goes through the process, the tribal planning commission and the tribal council? They make a recommendation to the city council? And the Palm Springs City Council has the ultimate decision?
Yes.
Okay, that helps. In terms of public benefit, I understand the argument being that because they're asking for a pet use, when the, normally the requirement is that you can't have that. So the staff's feeling was that because it's not that much of a request in terms of variances and so forth, that public art would suffice in that corner?
Yes, that was where, where we were leaning towards.
Okay, thank you. All right, so why don't we have the applicant come forward?
Do you want the, the consultant?
Oh, yes, absolutely.
CEQA consultant?
Yes, please. He's going to turn it on. Is that working? There, how about that?
Good afternoon, commissioners. My name is Jesús Herrera Cortez. I am the environmental planner and consultant. I've worked on the CEQA addendum document. And just wanted to provide some background on the analysis that was done to reach our findings. So when we looked at the applicability of the addendum, we looked at several factors. And after reviewing the project, wanted to determine if the new, if the project in its modified form would introduce any new significant impacts, any new mitigation measures, any increase in the severity of impacts that were previously analyzed. And after reviewing the, the components of the project, we determined that, that the, the prior environmental review and the supplemental portion of it addressed those most current guidelines that are in CEQA. We also had a chance to review the Phase 1 environmental site assessment, which was on on the property, which looked at the current conditions to determine if there were any recognized environmental conditions as far as any-- recognized environmental conditions, as far as any contamination, any risk of contamination on the site. And the conclusion to that report was that there were no, no threats to the property as far as there being any environmental conditions of concern. As part of the analysis, we had a chance to run the most current air emissions modeling for the project, using the 95 units, the commercial component. We provided those figures in the addendum, and none of the thresholds were exceeded, so we're within the allowable emissions. We also had a chance to run the numbers pertaining to greenhouse gas emissions and climate change, and again, looking at the current criteria based on the emissions modeling, there were no thresholds exceeded, so. Other than that, we looked at every element of the SEQA checklist, and looked at the comparison to the prior project, and determined that it was still a relevant document that we can rely upon, so.
Questions for the consultant? Seeing none. Now we should have the applicant present. You'll have 10 minutes. Please give us your name and address, and then there will be two minutes of rebuttal if necessary.
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, my name is Lauren Ostrow. I live at 589 La Marada Road in Palm Springs, also a resident of Los Angeles. I am the owner of Core International, along with my partner of 42 years, Paul Allen East. And we have been, we are both real estate attorneys by education and profession for a while, and then we became real estate developers in 1985, so we've been doing this for 34 years. We've built over $3 billion of commercial real estate, primarily hotels, casinos, some residential, some shopping center. And for the past 25 years, we focused on the casino business. We've been in the casino business mostly in Louisiana and Mississippi and, and other Midwest jurisdictions. We sold our final casino in January, and my partner Paul, who has been a dear friend for many years, said to me, Lauren, you've been talking about this idea for 30 years. I think it's about time that we do it. So, we began doing this project in earnest. We bought the land, we've done the planning. And I, besides my business career, I've been on the board of the Los Angeles LGBT Center since 1993. I've been its chair for nine, I was its chair for nine years, and I remain on the board of the LGBT Center there. I also was chair of the National Gay and Lesbian Task Force for two years, and served on that board for nine years. And so I've known for many, many years that this, that there was an issue going to be facing the LGBT community as we aged. And as you probably know through the literature, there are some really horrible stories about people who, as they age, have nowhere to go, nowhere to live in a safe, secure environment. You hear stories of people having to go into kind of more traditional retirement communities and hiding their pictures. I met a woman at a store on Takwitz yesterday who told me that her aunt, you know, hid in her apartment because she was a lesbian and she was living in Ohio, and she couldn't tell people. And the generation that we're trying to provide housing for is the generation that came out. They were the first generation to come out, and the idea of people having to go back in the closet in their older years, just to me is an anathema. And so, I named the project Living Out because I wanted it to be very clear that this was about creating an environment in a community where people could live with dignity, and they could be out and not have to go back in the closet. Palm Springs is a natural place to start this company. I hope to do it in other places, but Palm Springs is a natural. One of my concepts for Living Out is that it must be around a community that's a vibrant, active LGBT community, not out in the country somewhere where there's no connection to a existing community. I've been asked, frankly, why Palm Springs, if it's such a safe environment, and it is for LGBT people, why would you do something like that here? Because people have so many other options. But they don't have options as they get older. We had a focus group with some people who live in Luminaire, and one of the fellows who came to this focus group said, you know, I'm the perfect customer for you guys because, you know, I've been married for many, many years, I live in Luminaire, I have friends, my husband recently passed away, I have friends who I see periodically, and I go to their once-a-month wine gatherings in someone's house. He said, but I'm getting older, I'm afraid, I'm lonely, I have no sense of community other than when I go out of the house. And he said, I need a community like this. And so even though, you know, that he lives in a community that's so friendly, in a city that's so friendly, you know, that sense of isolation as you get older is pretty palpable. And I'm trying to address that issue. So we designed this project in a way that would speak to what planning told us that the city was interested in. And they made it quite clear, the planning director made it very clear in the beginning that what the city was looking for in terms of newer development was kind of a central building with lots of open space, rather than what had been going on with, with these smaller, small lot developments. And so we, we designed this project with that in mind. We have a lot of open space, we have a lot of amenities. And I think it's a project that has been designed architecturally to fit into Palm Springs. I show pictures to people, and they all say, oh my God, it looks just like it should look in Palm Springs. And so we've, we've tried to be cognizant of those issues. The city asked us to have retail, and so trying to come up with retail, you know, Takwitz is not a retail street, even though it had been thought that it might be. So I, Paul and I tried to come up with something that would service the community that was there. And I learned at a seminar given by a LGBT marketing company based in San Francisco, they had a, they had a two-day meeting with all sorts of statistics about the LGBT community, that LGBT people own pets in a substantially higher percentage than the general population. And so we thought of this as an amenity. The park, the park was essentially an amenity for the residents, and that we would have this pet facility that would have a store, a pet grooming, daycare, and a pet hotel, primarily for residents who would be going away, you know, and they could leave their pets right there, but also for the general public. And I've arranged with somebody who owns a pet store company in Los Angeles, a very active, successful pet store company who would run this business for us. So that's where that came from. We, some of the things that AAC, you were asking what AAC had asked for, one of the things that they wanted was more kind of a statement on the corner of Hermosa and Takwitz. We originally had the building right up against the corner. They asked us to push that back and to put this plaza in there, which is, was a response to what they wanted. As was discussed, the project does not seek any variances as to height, density, any of that. It's only this pet use as a result of this being in Section 14. And that's the only thing that, that we're requesting. As it relates to the conditions, the, the art condition that we, you know, that the city has suggested that we put public art in there, using the art fee that we would normally be paying, is fine with us, and we think it's an appropriate thing to do for what we're being granted, the variance in effect for use that we're being granted. The bus stop issue is something that we do not feel is appropriate, and we would ask this commission to waive that, that if they, if they are so inclined. We caught, first, there was, there's two elements to the bus stop issue. One, they suggested that we put a shelter there rather than just an open stop. And we called Sunline, and Sunline said, well, we would never do that because we, we have counts of who takes buses, and there's one person a week, one person a day who takes a bus from that location. So we would never request that you have a shelter. So we would request that that requirement be removed from the conditions. The other is the turnout. My understanding is that my predecessor, Ravanti, we looked at their conditions, they're under the same general plan, the same specific plan, and that was not a requirement for them. So we're not exactly sure why that has arisen now. In addition, it's been, we're being told that there are no other turnouts along Takwitz, and that the general plan is being looked at. And, you know, it's a busy street, and, but generally in urban kind of environments, these turnouts are not what is used. Also, my understanding is that the shopping center is being used now by the college, and that the whole bus routing system may change dramatically based upon all of the people who will be coming to that. So based upon those considerations, we'd ask that you remove that condition from our So, in general, I'd like to ask you to approve the project with, with the removal of that condition today. I'll leave you with a story about two women in Missouri recently. It's been in the newspapers.
Time's up, my friend, thank you. Thank you. It's time for public comments from the audience. Anyone who wishes to speak may come up. You have three minutes. Give us your name and address.
Hello, my name is Mark Pryor. I live at 610 North Dry Falls in Vistalous Palmas. And I'm here as a private citizen and not in my role as the CEO of the Palm Springs Art Museum. But I do want to say that I've known Lauren Ostrow for roughly 10 years. He was our neighbor in Los Angeles for seven years before we moved down here on a full-time basis. And I just want to attest to, to the great integrity of Lauren. He's a, he's a wonderful, charitable man who goes about doing the kind of things that he does very quietly, but has had a great impact on the community, especially in Los Angeles. And he's a man of integrity. He'll do what he says. Personally, for this project, I think it's, it's vital to our community of Palm Springs. I think it continues to put us on the map as a place that's vital in the world, and really as a beacon of what we can do in the world for LGBTQ people as well. So I love seeing this. Thank you.
Thank you. Others that would like to speak?
Hi, commissioners, I'm David Brinkman. I live at 1011 West Cielo Drive. I'm here as a private citizen, not speaking in my role as CEO of Desert AIDS Project. Even though today over half of Americans support gay marriage, for most LGBT elders, they remember a time when they could be arrested and be victims of physical crime just for being gay or trans. And so, as this population is aging, losing control of their own private lives, going looking for housing and support, becomes a time where they're more vulnerable again. By 2030, there will be 7 million LGBT elders in our country. They deserve to have a place that they will be respected and cared for and receive compassionate care, and for this reason, I support this Living Out project.
Commissioners, my name is Barry Jones. I'm the executive assistant to Mike Thompson, who's the CEO of the LGBT Community Center of the Desert. Mike is unable to be here today, but he feels strongly about this project, so he has a letter that he would like me to read to you. Dear Commissioners, I am writing in support of the proposed development at the corner of North Hermosa Drive and East Takwitz Canyon Way, titled Living Out. The Living Out project aligns with and complements the mission of the LGBT Community Center of the Desert, AKA The Center, which is to create vibrant community by helping LGBTQ people along their way. As a thriving community-based organization, The Center provides a safe and supportive environment for members to enjoy wellness, education, support, and social programming. Currently, in most retirement communities across the nation, LGBTQ seniors often have to go back into, into the closet as they are targets of harassment and discrimination by other residents and staff. The Living Out project will offer a supportive environment for LGBTQ elders to live independently with programming designed to meet their specific needs. The city of Palm Springs will benefit from being one of the first cities, if not the first city, to embrace the building of a highly designed, multi-storied, amenity-rich condominium complex geared towards the LGBTQ elder population. This type of residential environment targeted for LGBTQ people is missing from the current Palm Springs housing stock. I hope you will agree with me and approve this project based not only on the merits of what it will provide to the LGBTQ community, but on the merits that it fulfills many of the goals of Section 14 specific plan by offering a quality infill development in the heart of our wonderful city. Sincerely, Mike Thompson. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Dale McGee. I live at 1250 East Andreas, just down the block from this proposed project. As an official elderly LGBT, I have interest in the project. I do just have a question, I wonder, that the commission might consider, which is, the parking proposed for this appears to me from the drawings to be at some distance separated from the units themselves, and I wonder how convenient that would be for elderly residents of the community. Also, some of the units, it appears to be that they would have tandem parking if they have two cars. So I'd just like some consideration to be given by the developers and the commission to such issues as that. That's all, thank you.
Good afternoon, Kevin Bass, and I live at 39740 Keenan Drive in Rancho Mirage. I've lived here since 92. I wear a couple of hats professionally, both in real estate, and I own Coachella Valley Home Health, which is the most, the longest established home health registry in the valley. It was established in 97, and I've owned it since 99. And we support this project more than I could possibly say. We take care of elderly people, some straight, some gay, and we primarily take care of them in people's homes. And the goal is to keep them in their homes. And socializing is extremely important to a person's well-being, to their total well-being. And when you're in your home and you're by yourself or with your caregiver, that element of your life is removed. And I want to tell you a quick story about a gentleman that we are currently taking care of, that we've taken care of for over 10 years. He came to us 10 years ago after losing his partner of 40 years, and after recovering primarily from a stroke, for the most part, he was recovered. But he knew that he should no longer drive, and he was, I believe he was in his late 70s, he may have been 80. And for the first three years, he had obviously terrific caregivers, we were providing the care, but consistent care. And they were taking him out on a nightly basis to a restaurant or to get a drink and go into a movie. And over the years, he began to fall into a depression. Now, he had great care, and he had communication with his caregivers. Now, he had great care, and he had communication with his caregivers every day, and he's had the same two caregivers for eight years. But it's not the same as having peer-to-peer relationships. And in the last two years, the caregivers have not been able to get him to leave his home, except to go to the doctors or to, you know, occasionally go to a lunch. He's mobile. They do help him with ADLs with his activities of daily living. They speak with him, they keep him company, but it is not the replacement of having peer-to-peer relationships. If this project were up and running, my recommendation would be for him to sell his home and move into a community like this, where he would still have his caregivers, they would still help with his ADLs and drive him to his appointments, but he would have the option to interact with like-minded people, which would be extremely important to his well-being. So I'm here to encourage you to approve this project. Thank you.
Anyone else like to speak?
I have lived here for 11 years. I have become totally immersed in the community and own property here. I am aware of the discrimination of older same-sex couples and what they can suffer. I'm pleased that Living Out has selected Palm Springs to create a safe environment for the older gay population, and I urge you to approve today so that they can get this built and make it available to the community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Bill Shaw. I live in Lubinair in Palm Springs. I've been here since 2011. I've known Lauren for many years, and I just urge you to approve this project. I could be there tomorrow. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak? Seeing none, the applicant has the choice of a two-minute rebuttal. All right. Well, we'll move on to questions of the applicant from the commission. Commissioner Donofeld.
I have one question. Obviously, this is not a skilled care facility or anything like that. Have you given any thought, though, to having onsite some sort of a medical presence, like an RN or someone 24/7? Because if the demographic is going to be an older demographic, could there be someone there to address, obviously not serious problems, but things that come up among older people as they age in these apartments?
Yes, in fact, I have considered that. We plan to have an office, an office area within the project for what I'm thinking of as a preferred home care provider. I've struggled with how you provide those kind of services, and we're not, that's not our business, and it's not our expertise. So I've had conversations with people like Kevin about how we could have someone accompany who really understands the cultural, has cultural competence when it comes to LGBT people. And so the plan is to have someone in this office who would be able to at least address issues as they come up.
Well, you have two wonderful people here, Mr. Brinkman and Mr. Bass from DAP, who I think can help you with something.
Exactly. That's why I've met with them quite a few times.
Also, I take it, then, in the middle of the complex is going to be all sorts of ways to socialize.
That's correct.
And so will the restaurant be available to the residents? Say they don't want to cook, they can come down there and have a meal? Is that your thought?
The thought is that that would be a restaurant that would be open in the evening, and then we will have like a Starbucks-type, not a Starbucks name operation, but a coffee shop with a more expanded menu than a typical coffee shop for breakfast and lunch. But that would all be for the residents only.
So you expect there'll be a number of common areas where people can mingle and get to know each other and that sort of thing?
That's correct. We will have a bar. When we did our focus groups, the number-one amenity requested was a bar.
A bar.
And there will be a piano, so Mr. Wright can play the piano. And there'll be a lot of, that's the goal, is to have this interaction with people so that they don't live in isolation.
Great, thank you.
Commissioner Hirschman, please come back up. You might as well just stay there.
Thanks. Just, you know, right up front, I'm a huge supporter of the project, but I do have some questions. Have you considered more like a meal plan sort of thing for residents, where they could purchase a certain amount of meals per month, or something along those lines? Because I see the interaction being centered around food, maybe that's just me, but more than drink.
Well, this is an independent living facility, and all of the units will have full kitchens.
Right.
The people will be, the entry point is 55 and older. And we talked about having all our meals there, but that would be a very expensive proposition. The HOA dues would be pretty high.
Much more, yeah.
And we think we're going to be providing a lot of opportunities other than food.
So is it like a meal plan where they could buy into it rather than having it?
Well, I think, I think like a country club, they could buy a certain amount and...
And the restaurant itself, do you expect that to be self-supporting, or will the HOA have to contribute to that?
No, we're hoping to be, that it will be self-supporting.
Okay.
It will be tough, but we hope to do that.
In terms of the bus turnout, I see your point. I don't necessarily see a necessity for a bus turnout, but I think with your, you know, population demographic that you're addressing, I think there might be more than one person a day at that bus stop. And I was wondering if you could think, would you think about just providing a shelter? And I know that that's different than a turnout. You wouldn't have to give up as much space and redesign the whole site plan around that, but just a shelter from, you know, obviously the sun in the summer and rain whenever we have that.
Well, frankly, I'd prefer to delay that and see what actually happens. I mean, we are going to have shuttle buses that will be part of the program to take people to different places in the community. So for our people, I don't know that they'll be taking the bus, you know, they'll be taking our buses primarily, I think.
In terms of pedestrians, non-residents entering the building, will there be some kind of security, like the public could enter the front door through to the restaurant, right, without any code or showing a pass or anything?
Well, we're, in fact, we discussed that today with the contractor about what level of security, and we're frankly assessing what the market provides right now, but it's my intention to make this building secure for the residents. So we will certainly have security, what the level of, there'll be security of some sort at each entry point, and there'll be security in the elevators, there'll be security in the garage, but what the nature of that is, and, you know, in today's world, human beings aren't necessarily the best security any longer. I mean, some of it is computer-driven.
Yes.
But that's certainly something that we're going to be having. We have to.
The pools that are shown in the site plan attached to the, in the private patios, is that something you're providing, or would you leave that up to the initial buyer?
That would be up to the initial buyer.
And, let's see. I mentioned the thing about the Cortan, you satisfied yourself that there's a coating that doesn't need to be recoded?
Yes.
That's going to prevent the staining. So I was thinking that it'd be nice, in terms of a public benefit, I was thinking it'd be nice to have the shelter there. I also think it'd be nice, in your little plaza, since it is a pet-friendly facility, maybe you do some sort of water fountain for dogs and a water fountain for people at that point as well.
Well, the water fountain will be in the pet park. There'll be, the dogs that are veiling themselves of the pet park will have water there. You're just saying for people walking down the street?
Well, it's a public benefit.
Yeah. I mean, I don't have an objection to it, but I don't, I don't, I'd have to talk to my designers to see how that would look and what that impact would be on the project.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Hudson?
Yes, thank you. Mr. Ostrow, I'd like to ask you a question about the lawn area at the northeast corner of the site. It's been pointed out that it's a separate parcel, and I understand that for now you want to use it as a lawn area, perhaps for events or whatever reason. But in the future, do you have any plans or any thoughts about what that separate parcel might become? Is it a phase-two housing or...?
Well, originally, I thought it might be an assisted living, a small assisted living facility, so people could just move across the way. Then it had been suggested that it might be more of a medical use. But, you know, we need to, since this hasn't been done before, I don't really know what, how it's going to play out. And so we've decided that rather, originally, Core was going to maintain ownership of that parcel, but we have decided to put that into the homeowners' association. So ultimately, the homeowners will make the decision of what that should be used for, if anything, other than a lawn.
Okay, thank you. I just like, I guess this isn't really a question, so perhaps I should wait for comments, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Commissioner Garner?
Is the dog park open to the public?
No.
Thank you.
I have just a few questions. My mother, for many years, lived in independent living in Florida, and I remember at meal times, it included two meals a day, you would be run over by walkers and wheelchairs because everybody wanted to be there because that's where they socialize, and this is what Commissioner Hirschman was talking about. Dining in that room was a big deal. I mean, it was like the highlight for many of these people a day, because they had their little groups, they sat together every night, they loved to socialize. I realize this is a condominium and not an independent living facility where people pay just a fee that includes meals. So I just think that might be an issue. People may still stay in their rooms and not come out as often as they would if they were, this is, obviously, you're not going to change your program just because I'm saying this, but I'm saying from my observation, these folks loved to get together for meals, and if they have to pay, you know, people are, they're, I don't know if I want to pay every day for a restaurant, you know. You're saying the HOA fees would be high, that would probably preclude it, you know, obviously, weight all these things, but I'm just telling from my observation.
You know, we thought, my mother is in one in Boston, and it's the same. I mean, they are like there, it opens at noon, and they are there at 12:00. And they all sit and, you know, have their meal and then go back to their room, because my mother's 95 now, so. But, you know, we thought about that, but, and the homeowners' association could make decisions to change the operation. This is just the operation that we think is appropriate at this point.
And you think that the kitchen would have the ability to serve that many people if the HOA changed their mind?
Yes.
Okay, so it could make the switch. What, do you, could you say what you think the anticipated costs would be for a unit?
We don't know that yet. We will have our construction costs in the next 30, 45 days, and based upon that, we'll know what we have in this project and what the appropriate price is. Plus, we're doing a survey of the market right now to see what appropriate prices are, but, you know, so I could say to you, they'd be in the range of $700,000 to $800,000, but that's an educated guess, not a real guess.
And that would be for a one-bedroom?
A one-bedroom, two-bedroom.
Two-bedroom?
Two-bedroom, probably. The units are one-bedroom and a den, and two-bedroom and a den.
I see.
And there's a variation in kind of layout within those, and they range from 1,220 square feet to 1,670 square feet.
Oh, they're large.
Yeah, they're, well, they're condominiums, and they're independent living, and yes, they're large. And they're going to be lovely.
The HOA dues, any sense of those yet?
We're hoping that, we just got our first budget from our expert, and it came in at about $850 a month.
I don't think my mother could afford it, but she's not lesbian, so why don't we move on?
She'd still be welcome.
That's true. Thank you very much. Good to be open-minded. So, yes, Commissioner Hirschman?
One of the public comments brought up a point I meant to ask you about, not me, and that was distance from parking to the units. There's elevators in the central core, that's correct.
That's correct, yes.
Are they on the ends of the parking wings as well? Are there elevators?
Yes, there are. We need to have you come up to the microphone and introduce yourself as well.
Can you hear me?
I can hear you.
So we have two elevators in the central core. We have an elevator in the northwest core end, and an elevator in the southeast end of the project. And part of the reason is that it's centrally located to parking.
Yes.
Street traffic, and then anyone who's in the middle, so it should cover everyone. And the ones at the end are a little larger, cabs for moving.
And then, stay there for a second.
Sure.
So the wing that goes to the north there, what's the farthest someone would have to walk from their car to their unit?
About 180, 190 feet, about 190, 95 feet.
So their car is going to be like closest to the core, right?
Yeah. All parking for the residents are in these two wings.
No, I understand that, but...
For here?
Yeah.
Yes, they'd walk to this, go down to the first floor and walk in.
Okay, all right.
Or they could go down the corridors.
Okay, right, right, right. Okay, thank you.
Actually, sir, could you stay up there for just one more minute? I'm sorry. To follow up on Commissioner Hirschman's questions about the elevators, did you mention, did I hear correctly, that the two outermost elevator, would those have access to and from the street at both of those locations?
Not, not within a security area. There are walkways to a door, an exit door there, that you could go in, or you could come through the garage and get in.
Speaking to the question of security, one would not be able to enter the building at those locations?
Correct.
Okay, and the, sort of a tangent to that question is, the question about trash and how it's brought down from the units to the parking, and then, could you sort of walk through that sequence, please?
Sure, sure. Trash, our trash room is here. It's actually gotten a little larger from this diagram. There are trash chutes in there, in the building, in here, so all residents in any wing would come right to the core, put on each floor, put it down their chute, get the trash into the bins, and at that point, the waste management company, whoever that may be, and this is very common in projects like this, will wheel them out to here, or they'll bring a small car actually in there that has forks on it, and pull it out and then dump it into here. And then we do have another trash area for retail up in here, and that was requested by AAC too.
Any other comments? I just have one question of staff. This is, you know, the city council often talks about affordable housing, and I just wanted to ask a question. Does affordable housing ever apply to condominiums?
It can. In terms of affordable housing, it can be both rental housing and also housing that is owned. Condominiums would be included within that.
That's a good question for the applicant. Has that, was that considered? I know, you know, it's just a question, but it's, you know, it's kind of pricey, and not everyone can afford gay or otherwise.
It was considered, but, you know, I, there are many affordable housing options in the LGBT world now, surprisingly enough, where there are none of what I'm doing. And so just the fact that somebody can afford it doesn't mean that they shouldn't have the ability to buy a unit. So I considered it, but we're not doing it. Because, you know, Desert AIDS Project is doing an affordable housing project right now. Los Angeles LGBT Center is opening one in two weeks. They just opened two in New York. There are a lot of options, frankly, for people in the gay world for affordable housing, but none for market-rate housing.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments before, well, this is more open discussion amongst ourselves, so yes, Commissioner Donofeld?
I've been on the planning commission for many years, seems like many years, and seldom have I seen a project that is more exciting, more needed in our community. And seldom have I seen a project that is more exciting, more needed in our community. Being a senior gay man myself, I understand the predicaments that one gets into as they get older. I think we should be the example, as Palm Springs, for this demographic. So I see nothing, I think the design is quite lovely, too. It's really in keeping with the aesthetic of Palm Springs, the history of Palm Springs. So I am fully, fully support, supportive of this project. I think it's a much-needed addition to this community. And I really thank you for doing it so sensitively and taking that property, which has been lying vacant for so, so very long, and making it something truly wonderful for our community. Thank you.
Mr. Hudson?
Yeah, I'd like to totally concur with what Commissioner Donenfeld just said. I think I mentioned that I was at at least one of the AAC meetings, reviews of this project. And I think personally, the changes that have been made to the project, especially the vehicular circulation, the driveways, the parking areas, the revision is, in my mind, much superior to what was being shown before, which, to be honest, had a lot of pavement, a lot of driveways. Now I see a lot more landscaping immediately adjacent to the residential wing, wings, which I think will be a much better, much better scheme. I think the architecture is quite wonderful. I think it does speak to Palm Springs. It's not, in my mind, a cliche, though. It has some real original characteristics to it. I like the Corten steel panels, but as been mentioned, I think that's a detail that just needs some continued work on to, to ensure that some of the characteristics of Corten steel don't, don't affect the building. I think it could be accomplished by sealing the panels or just using a powder-coated, painted steel panel instead of the Corten. But overall, I think the architecture is, is quite wonderful. I think the landscaping and the exterior amenities are just unbelievable. I think that'll be a major selling point for this project. A couple detail issues, or comments, rather. Back to that public amenity plaza at the south, southeast corner of the project. I realize that it's, it's proportional to the derivation being asked for in terms of the pet use, so I don't expect it to be a grand civic plaza. But I would encourage a little bit more detail taken to the landscape design, perhaps a bit more shade, some real detailed look into benches and seating areas, and perhaps a drinking fountain, as Commissioner Hirschbein said. And I think it needs to, how can I say this? It needs to be obvious that the public can use that space, that in other words, doesn't read as an overly privatized space. I spent a lot of my, my time in San Francisco, and in San Francisco downtown, there, there are elements called POPOs or POPOs, which are privately-owned publicly, public open spaces. And up there, the, it's, it's very important that, that signage is a part of these spaces so that the public realizes that they can use the space and don't feel intimidated about doing so. So I would suggest, as a condition, that some very discreet signage is used at that location to ensure that the public, the public knows that they can use the space. But again, I think it's, in my mind, it's a, it's a superior project, and I think if it's built, one that I'll be taking a much closer look at in a few years. Thank you.
Commissioner Garner?
I agree with everyone. It's a, it's a wonderful project. But what I, I want to talk about is the bus stop. So I, I understand that maybe there isn't a lot of use for the bus stop right now, but I think as our community changes and as we become more green, just generally, in Palm Springs and our country, that bus stops are, are going to be vital and increasing the amount of use. So I think that putting in the structure, putting in the outlet is great. It's also, we're getting a lot more tourism, we're getting a lot more traffic on Takwitz. And providing these types of resources is going to be important. I think we need to be thinking long-term when we're thinking of bus stops and putting these in place as we move forward, instead of waiting until there is a need. Because by the time there is a need, we've already are doing a disservice to a number of people. So I think that it is extremely important to be thinking for the future and not just for the one person that's standing there now.
Anyone else?
Yeah, I, obviously, I brought it up. I, I'm not so sure I need for a turnout. I think a bus stopping on Takwitz at the present curb is not very disruptive to traffic. That street's never going to be a major thoroughfare. It only goes from the airport to downtown. It's not like Ramone or Gene Autry. So I, I don't think that's going to be a major disruption to traffic, but I do agree that a shelter would be appropriate. It's not impinging on the site plan to any significant degree whatsoever. It could be designed in keeping with the commercial building. The design of it could incorporate some elements of that. And I certainly agree with Commissioner Hudson's comments about the plaza, as I mentioned, dog and people, drinking fountain, and perhaps some benches. I, I think the bench part of it, you know, people walking, there's some relief, you could sit, there's a bit of shade, there's, you can drink a water. That's a public benefit. Just putting some nice paving down in front of a commercial building is much less of a public benefit. So I would support a shelter, and I would support modifications to that plaza. I do love the building. The amenities are over the top, good, and I think there's going to be a lot of happy elderly gay people living there.
Yeah, I would say that I agree with the comments regarding the bus shelter and the idea of a better public benefit, based on what Commissioner Hudson said and Hirschbein. So if someone wants to make a motion including those items, I would be glad to support it.
So enthusiastically approving the project, subject to those two conditions. And I think planners have, have that, know what we're saying.
So I'll just repeat that. Number one is relative to the provision of a shelter for the bus stop, but there does not need to be a turnout. Is that correct?
Correct.
And then, secondly, relative to the.
Well, the shelter, I'd like to see it incorporate the vocabulary of the, of the commercial building.
And then, second, relative to the plaza at the corner, it's requested that the applicant look at providing more shade, benches or seating area, drinking fountain, and then discreet signage identifying it as a plaza.
Right. And, and maybe it's not like a bench, maybe it's just the raised planter, width of the planter wall, just so somebody could.
Identify seating and just leave the generic.
Seating, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Any other comments before a vote? All right, may we have a vote? Passes unanimously. Congratulations. Are we going to take a short break?
Mr. Chair, we have a special meeting that will follow the regularly scheduled planning commission meeting. In order to make that change, we need to change out our software. It will take us about five minutes to do that. And so what we will go ahead and do, if I could have you adjourn the regular meeting, and then we will take a five-minute break and then go into the special meeting.
The report's after the special meeting, then?
Yes.
Okay.
So then, I hereby close this public hearing, and we will reconvene in five minutes.
Can I have you take the conversations outside? Thank you, so we can continue our meeting. Thank you very much and congratulations. I'd like to call a special meeting for March 27, 2019. A special meeting regarding a new business for a vacation to order at this point. May we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Donenfeld.
Present.
Garner.
Present.
Hirschbein.
Present.
Hudson.
Present.
Commissioner Song is excused. Vice Chair Maruzzi.
Here.
And Chair Woods.
I'm present.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. May we have a staff report on the posting of the agenda?
Mr. Chair, the agenda was posted on Monday. This meeting has been noticed and posted in accordance with state law.
Okay, move to accept the agenda. Is there any objection? Hearing no objection, the agenda is accepted. So we'll move right away into public comment. Is there anyone in the audience? I see no one in the audience to speak on this matter. So move right on to new business. This is James Milligan for a request to abandon and vacate the right-of-way for a portion of Bissnaga. Am I pronouncing that right? Bissnaga Avenue in Section 25 Township 4 South, Range 4 East. And could we have a staff report, please?
Mr. Chair and members of the Commission, before I turn this over to Mr. Primera for the staff report, I just want to thank you first of all for allowing us to do this as a special agenda item, a special meeting item. This item was originally prepared for Planning Commission, I believe, last month, but there was a last-minute hang-up with the legal description, and so we had to pull the item. There is a degree of urgency in moving this item forward, and so that's why we have done this as a special meeting today. So again, I appreciate you all allowing us to move forward with this item. With that, I will turn this over to Mr. Philippe Primera from our Engineering Services Department. He will go ahead and explain the vacation request. Mr. Primera?
Thank you. Commissioners, Mr. Milligan, who is the owner of 2359 Bissnaga Avenue, has applied for a vacation of right-of-way. He is currently at the south end of Bissnaga Avenue. There have been previous vacations of Bissnaga Avenue in 2001 and again in, I'm sorry, in 1993 and again in 2001 that has vacated the roadway further south of him. Basically, he and his neighbor, Mr. Brunel, to the east are the very last homes on Bissnaga Road. And so he is requesting to vacate a portion of the right-of-way for his use. I did submit these to the various utility companies as Southern California Edison, South County Gas, Frontier, Desert Water Agency, and most did not have an issue with it. There are overhead power lines and phone lines that follow the power poles that go further south, which is why we're requesting a reservation of a public utility easement so they can access the power poles. There are, I don't believe there are any underground facilities. Check that. I think there may be a gas line on the western side of Bissnaga. But for the most part, most utility companies did not have an issue with it. The sanitary sewer stops before Mr. Milligan's property, so there's no issue there. And so we are requesting approval of the right-of-way vacation for his property.
Great, thank you. Are there any questions of staff? Commissioner Hirschbein?
Thank you. So when the city vacates a right-of-way, who assumes ownership of the property?
Normally, Commissioner Hershing, sorry?
Hirschbein.
Hirschbein, okay. Normally what happens is the neighboring adjoining property owners each get half of the road, okay? In this particular instance, Mr. Brunel's property was not part of the original Araby tract. Bissnaga was dedicated as part of the original Araby tract in 1925, and so there was nothing platted east of Bissnaga at that point. It was only later that there was properties that were bought and platted later. So as a result, Mr. Brunel does not have rights to his half of the road, which is why, in speaking to the planning director, we allowed for a little bit more room for access for his property. At this point, he is not, he is planning to develop. As some of the planning staff knows, his property is extremely steep, so his development options are very limited. However, we did provide access in case he does move forward for any future development.
And is he aware of this proposal?
Absolutely, yes, sir.
The property owners?
Yes.
And then, excuse me, is there any cost to the city associated with this request?
No, not at all. The portion that he's requesting for vacation is actually not paved, so there would be no cost that I can think of for any type of maintenance. The sewer, again, stops way before his property. There is a turnaround about 120 feet or so just north of his property for fire access. So no, there should be no, there should be no cost to the city at all.
And Mr. or Miss or Mrs. Milligan applied to the city for this, is that correct?
Yes.
Is there a fee that they pay to do this?
Oh, yes.
And do you know what that is?
At the time, I believe it was $2,000 or so.
And that's meant to cover your costs and paperwork and drawing maps and so forth?
Yes. What happens, just so you know, the process, when they submit, they have to submit a legal description of the portion that they are vacating. And then we have that planned check. We have to make sure that that legal description is valid. And then that, that point, we then, and then I go ahead and distribute it to the various utility companies to see what comments they have. If they don't have any comments, it usually goes into a summary vacation, which means that we never see you over that. It doesn't need to be brought before the planning commission, because a couple of utilities did have comments, which is why we're bringing it before you now. And then once this is approved by you, then I go ahead and forward it on to the city council for their review and approval.
And what were the utility comments? I'm sorry.
There are overhead power poles. There is one on the corner of Mr. Milligan's property, and then they move, they go south into the backyards of his neighbors.
So what was the comment, though?
They just wanted an easement to be able to access those power poles.
Okay, and you're accommodating that?
Yes, yes. If you have your report on page two, there is a, I'm sorry, page three, there is a, an exhibit that shows the photograph of the actual end of the road where his neighbor, when she vacated her portion, had to allow a 10-foot-wide access for the utility trucks to get through. So he will have to do the same. I don't anticipate him putting up a fence, but if he does, I have put in a provision for him to allow at least a 10-foot access to move forward.
You said there were a couple of comments. What was the other one?
That was Frontier. Frontier also has overhead lines.
Oh, so it's all about the overhead?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, well, thanks a lot.
Are there any more questions of staff at this point? Hearing no questions of staff, there's no public here to anything. Do we hear, I have a motion?
I have a motion to approve the staff report.
Second? Is there a second for the motion? Okay, please vote. There it goes. Okay, motion passes. It's approved. With that, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn the planning commission to the regular meeting at 1:30 PM on Wednesday, April 10, 2019.
Mr. Chair, one of the things that we didn't do with the regular meeting is we didn't have time for planning commission reports. I think it would be appropriate if we do that now.
Perfect.
Thank you. Any reports from the planning commission members?
Commissioner Hudson?
I'm having a heck of a time filing my Form 700, my conflict of interest or whatever, online. Do you, have you, any of you other commissioners had problems with that?
Commissioner, I am going to head down to the clerk's office after this meeting. If you would like to join me.
I would love to.
It's a date.
I don't think it's just me. It's very, uh...
Yeah, I've had problems with mine as well, so I'll be visiting them.
Commissioner Garner, did you have a question?
I did. So with the Living Out project, it really wasn't until public comment and the applicant came up that I understood at all what the project was. And it seemed like everyone else knew, maybe you knew through other ways. I don't, I don't know. But I felt like it would have been helpful to know that this was a LGBT senior living community. I mean, I could have figured it was a senior living community in some way, but I think it's helpful to kind of give a little bit of context, if that's possible for a future.
Certainly, certainly.
Thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Hirschbein?
Yeah, just a couple of questions about some projects. The Dream Hotels, any update on that?
They have their building permit. They're moving forward very slowly.
You want to, you want to rephrase that?
I don't know why the construction hasn't proceeded more quickly. I'm not aware of any issues from the city's standpoint in terms of the permits that have been issued.
And then the status of the downtown park?
The downtown park, we have received a copy of the 100% construction drawings. They have not been forwarded to city council yet. I don't know why they haven't, but it's ready to move forward here very quickly.
And then what's, that's great news. And then what's the process by which it goes out to bid? There's a city department that handles that?
The engineering department with our purchasing manager will be responsible for putting that project out to bid.
Okay, and there's, do we have a timeframe yet?
I don't, unfortunately.
Okay, okay, thanks for that. Thank you.
Mr. Maruzzi?
Yeah, I was just curious. I remember at the council meeting the other day, there was some discussion of boulders for the Cameron project. I think additional boulders for landscaping, council member Middleton, I believe, brought it up. No, no, this is the Cameron project? Yeah, Meskeed and Palm Canyon?
By way of background, there have been some questions as the interim landscaping has been installed along the border of the Cameron project, whether the landscape plan meets the plan that was approved by the Architectural Advisory Committee. One of the questions was that the boulders were not large enough, and so my staff has been out and inspected the site. They have noted a number of deficiencies with the landscape plan. The property owner is aware of those and is working to correct those. The city council at their meeting last week approved a minor modification to the subdivision improvement agreement to facilitate the sale of the property. We understand that that sale is scheduled to close here shortly, and hopefully the new property owner will be construct, begin construction of the project in accordance with the plans that have been approved.
Just a little chicken and egg thing. It might be that the Toll Brothers start construction prior to the temporary landscaping coming up to the agreement.
We need to have the landscaping signed off as being in conformance with the approved plan first.
Okay, good.
So they've got to meet that.
The other question I have is regarding the project next to Rick's on North Palm Canyon, the one that looks like, you know, there's, oh, it came before us, the restaurant. What's the status of that?
Yes, let's see. I believe that we have approved the conditional use permit for the restaurant, and so they are permitted to go forward and submit building permits. There was an issue. They had a decorative fence cover up on their property that was unfortunately stolen, and so they're in the process of trying to restore that back. But the intent is that they will be submitting for building permits here shortly. And Gensler is their architect, yeah.
We don't know what that means.
I haven't been given a schedule, no.
Commissioner Hirschbein?
Along those lines, the Virgin Hotel extension required certain improvements to the site. What's the status? And I asked last time, what's the penalty if, for noncompliance?
I'm sorry, I didn't research that for you. My apologies. They have submitted a plan to do pop-up retail on the site using, I think you've seen the temporary little structure that they have there on Block D behind the Rowan Hotel. The idea is to use similar ones to that at the perimeter of the property. It is going to the city council subcommittee for review of that temporary installation, and so once the subcommittee approves it, they can begin installation of those improvements.
So we're talking about a delay in that end of March requirement that the site be approved?
Well, they've submitted the plan. It needs to be approved by the city council before they can begin, so really it's up to the city to approve it.
Okay, thank you.
I just had a couple of comments. One is, I don't know if it's engineering or if it's planning, but the Cameron project, the right-of-way improvements, when they've added the lights, made a massive difference when you drive there just from safety. And I love that it shines up and down like the Starbucks does, the new Starbucks, so I want to give whoever planned check that to give them major kudos on making sure that that was in there, because that is definitely an improvement to what we've traditionally seen with just the uplights. And it makes driving that roadway so much safer. I feel so much better and beautiful. And do you have any, can you give us an update, or, and I don't mean to put you on the spot on the boulders project, which is the vacant land in Little Tuscany?
Yeah, unfortunately, I can't. I haven't really been involved with that project.
Behind you, it seems like.
Oh, sorry. I've got engineering here. I'll let engineering take it.
Yeah, the boulders project, so I've been talking with the new partner that Grit has brought on. I don't know their official name. I've been dealing with one individual, and they're anticipating wanting to pull permits within the next three to four weeks to begin the actual construction of the boulders project. It is entitled, it is completed, they have final map recorded, all their plans are completed. They have a few environmental items to finish up. They have a few tribal items to finish up. It's a very short list of things to do, but they have a very short timeframe that they're hoping to pull their permits, they saying by the end of April. I'm not sure if that can be achieved with what's left. And then they have October, end of October to, is there two-year timeframe for, to have construction completed? So there's a question on whether or not the, that timeframe would end during their construction and that he would have to vacate the premise. So that's what they're trying to get an assurance from the city for that. So the general climate from them is they want to pull permits in the next two or three weeks and get going, so.
And just, Rick, just so that I'm clear, they have to have construction completed within two years or started within two years?
Well, I think that's where it comes down to a definition that the city has had, and I talked with Flynn a little bit about it, was I think there's this definition of substantial construction.
Okay.
Within that timeframe. And so that's really geared more towards when you have a project, when they're actually building houses and structures. This project is not building houses and structures. It's only building streets and infrastructure. So does that same type of general rule apply? That's what they're trying to get clarification on, or they might apply for a time extension if need be. So that's kind of where they're at.
Great, thank you. I thank you. I just would ask that staff be very cognizant of any mitigation measures and impacts during the construction of that build-out so that we don't repeat past ills.
We've, we've been very open about the items that they need to meet.
Thank you very much. Is there any comment, more comments or from the commission? There is no one here from, our council liaison is not here, so planning director report.
I just have one. I just have one thing. At our last Planning Commission meeting, we appointed a Subcommittee to study the submittal requirements for our applications. I've had one question, whether we should also appoint one member of the Architectural Advisory Committee to that Subcommittee and just wanted to pull the Planning Commission, if you felt that would be appropriate to do so. Okay. The only issue I have is as we get more members on a Subcommittee, it becomes more and more difficult to schedule those meeting times, to work with everyone's calendars, but we'll go ahead and do that. I'll ask Chair Jakeway who he would like to have serve on that committee. Mr. Malacher, our associate, one of our associate planners, will be spearheading that Subcommittee, and so he'll be getting in contact with you here shortly. Glenn has been responsible for putting together our application forms and identifying the submittal requirements, and so I think he would be very apt at working with the Subcommittee in defining those requirements. And that's everything that I have.
That's it. So do I hear a motion to adjourn now, this time for real, to 1:30 PM on Wednesday, April 10?
I motion.
Okay, and a second?
Second.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you very much.